Of CSG Law. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Fifteenth and Grove, J.C. LLC.
Excellent.
Okay, so in accordance with the MLUL, our notice of tonight's hearing was properly published in the Jersey Journal and mailed, and an affidavit of publication and mailing was provided and uploaded to the portal and provided to the planning department, and I do have an original copy, which I'd be happy to provide as well.
Yes.
This evening, it does appear to be in order, Mr. Chairman, so we can mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel. You had 46 months to go paperless. What happened?
The statute does not provide for paperless notice.
Good answer. Thank you.
Chairman.
Yet. Okay, so good evening, everyone. This is an application for amended preliminary and final major site plan approval. By way of background, back in August of 2020, this planning board granted preliminary and final major site plan approval in connection with several design waivers for the proposed development of a 23-story residential building that, at the time, contained ground floor retail, an enclosed parking garage, and 444 residential units, a portion of which included affordable housing units, and that was located on Block 7102, Lot 7, which is known as 619 Grove Street, and which I'm going to refer to as the St. Lucy's parcel. Prior to this board's review and approval, the HPC had granted approval in July of 2020 for the St. Lucy's parcel, and that included specifically preservation of the front facades of the existing St. Lucy's Church, rectory, and former school building, which was being used at that time as a homeless shelter. So it's also noted, for the record, that in connection with that 2020 approval, the applicant had also sought approvals for a homeless shelter to be developed across the street. That would be on Block 7103, Lots 12 through 17, which is known as, or was known as, 610 through 620 Grove Street, and which has since been built, received a certificate of occupancy, and is currently operating as the new St. Lucy's homeless shelter, and is not part of tonight's application. So you're going to hear from our architect this evening, and he's going to discuss certain architectural design changes which are being proposed specifically to the residential tower, and those are the basis for tonight's application. None of the prior design waiver relief obtained is being modified, other than a slight variation with respect to the height. However, the building remains compliant with the number of units and with the number of stories. So it's very specifically compliant with the 23-story height requirement and the specific density permitted under the redevelopment plan. The applicant went back to HPC in July of this year, not in connection with the approval of the tower, but specifically for the incidental changes that resulted to the historic facades. And just to briefly explain that, we had eliminated the eighth-floor terrace onto the -- of the tower that originally went into the church bell tower. So again, that was a net positive in terms of historic preservation because it eliminated that access, so it otherwise remained wholly untouched. In addition, as you'll hear from our architect, we eliminated the ground floor retail component, which eliminated the need to modify the existing entrances at the ground level, and for that reason, they could be maintained and preserved in their exact character as they are today. So those changes were discussed with HPC, and we received that approval in July. Since that time, we have received comments from various review agents, including the JCMU Way and the Department of Transportation and Engineering, and we submitted revised plans addressing those comments. We have our architect, Jose Carballo, from Michael Graves Architecture. He's going to give you a brief overview of the design changes to the tower, and then, to the extent necessary, we also have a representative of the applicant, as well as our site engineer, to address any engineering questions. So unless the board has questions for me, I'd like to call our architect.
Ms. Porter, just before Mr. Carballo gets into the testimony, there was a historic commission approval that was received that you just mentioned with
Correct.
conditions.
Yes.
And obviously, the applicant agrees to both the memo and the conditions placed therein.
Absolutely.
Okay, so...
We are still subject to the original 2020 approval issued by HPC, as well as the ongoing, everything that was set forth on the record in terms of our 2023 approval from HPC in July of last year.
Thank you. So let's get Mr. Carballo sworn in, and then, Mr. Carballo, I'm going to ask that you briefly explain the differences that triggered the amendment.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and if you can state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure. Jose Carballo, J-O-S-E, last name is C-A-R-B-S-M-B-Y-A-L-L-O.
Thank you.
Mr. Carballo, good evening.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Pleasure to see you in person, and your license is current tonight in the state of New Jersey?
Current and paid for, absolutely.
Okay. As always, you're qualified. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Just go. So you remember, this building was approved, this project was approved about three years ago. It was approved by another firm. Subsequent to that, Claremont Developers, the owners of the project, hired Michael Graves to develop the joints for the building. In doing that, there were several changes that were required, as well as several changes that, you know, obviously, as architects, we always do things differently. What you see on the screen right now, this is our version of the building. It still maintains the, you know, mostly glass exterior. It still maintains what we call the slice, which is that portion of the buil--
Does it still maintain some of that?
The slice, which is that portion of the building that we sliced back, that we cut back. So for all intents and purposes, the building remains as is. The original approval had some diamond-shaped metal on the outside. We removed that. We wanted to make it look a little bit more residential, and what we ended up is a glass pattern, a running pattern that actually mimics the angle of the slice. As you can see from here, we're still maintaining the three buildings from the St. Lucy's campus, and as Ms. Porter explained, some of the changes or alterations to the exterior of the buildings will not be necessary anymore because we're not going to be accessing the building from the outside. So one of the things that, you know, sometimes we architects don't do is worry about building systems we're presenting to boards, and the main building system here was a structural system. The slice, it's a great component of the building, but it does create some problems. So in looking at installing or just designing the structure of the building, we found out that in several different levels, we needed what's called transfer areas, whether it's a transfer slab or is it a transfer beam, but we needed some thickness on the floors. So that happened in four different areas, and because of that, the building grew 23 feet. Now, if you look at, let's see, how do you do this? If you look at the building, as soon as it clears up a little bit, you're going to see that the top of the building has a nine-foot distance to it. This is a glass parapet wall that we actually installed, one, just to keep all the equipment at a sight, which includes a window washing equipment, which obviously wasn't included on the first approval, but also, as 23 stories up in the air, that wind blows a little harder, so we wanted to make sure that personnel, maintenance personnel, when they were up on the roof, that they were going to be blown off the roof. So, and that's a parapet wall. So the 23 feet, extra 23 feet that we're requesting, it's actually about 14 feet when we remove that parapet wall that we have on the other top floor. Again, you see here that the three buildings, the church, the rectory, and the school remain as they are. Those buildings, as per HPC requirements, have to be, you know, brought back to what they used to be, and because we don't have retail on those two buildings on the right, the rectory and the school, we don't have access from the street anymore. That will be an amenity space, which we'll see in a little bit, so that the two steps, the two stairs, and as well as the door that was going to be altered, they're going to remain the same. So that was something that we worked out with HPC, and they actually embraced that change. Again, you see the building, it's basically similar to what the other approval was, and you can see that on the drawing on the left, the left elevation, which is 15th Street, it maintains the exterior of the church as per the original approval. This is the floor plan, the first floor, and here, what we see is that that area that was originally, which is this area here and here, that was originally retail, and the lobby down here, it's now all amenity space. The lobby was moved from the church portion of the building towards the back, closer to where the train station is, because we feel that more people are going to be coming from the train than any other part of the, through the building. You see the bicycle racks, which we'll maintain. I just wanted to show this only because we're still maintaining the open spaces and the two-story spaces in the church and the other buildings so that we don't have an extra story. We still have 23 stories, just the way that it originally was approved. The reason for this drawing is we got some comments from transportation, the Department of Transportation, right, and basically, the comments were, well, you, we changed the location of the bicycle storage, and we changed it to different floors. One of the comments was, well, how do you make this a little safer for the interaction between residents with bikes and cars? So what we did is we striped the floor to show that there will be some bikers carrying the bikes, not actually riding them, and we also had some signage that says, you know, slow down bikers in biking lanes. The other thing that happened with the bike, too, that transportation had an issue with is, well, what happens when you don't find, because, you know, we have bikes on both floors, on two levels. So what happens when you can't find a space on one level, you have to go to the other one? They're going to be assigned levels. So you know exactly where you're going to be at all times. This is your, you know, your hook. This is your rack. This is where your bike is going to end up. So we solved the problem that way. This floor plan basically shows that we actually started laying out all the floor plans, which the original drawings didn't have, as well as, this is the core of the building. This is the fifth floor of top of the other garage. So now, we're actually landscaping, you know, the whole area for the usage of the tenants, the occupants, as well as we have some interior amenity spaces, which we're going to start seeing now. This is now the sixth floor. This is the portion in the, on the corner. It's the, that is the, I forget the word. This is the gym. This is your fitness area. As well as on the outside, you're going to have a deck, again, because we have to waterproof floor that is heated down underneath that, we actually have to increase the other side so that deck, so we can actually do decking and insulation and waterproofing. So we go up to the 23rd floor, and this is where the swimming pool is. Swimming pool is facing east. It has, you know, it's an outdoor swimming pool, and it has some amenity space, spaces inside of it. That was not part of the original proposal. The only reason for this drawing here is that we just want to tell you that we're still maintaining the flood mitigation, you know, issues that we had originally. So that's all part of the application as well.
There's no change there.
There's no change there, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead.
Just as you said, the outside's not going to change where the churches. I noticed though you're going to be putting a different type of fence. Historic is good with the fence that you're putting in. Is that, that's not going to be an issue for you?
No, we actually have very specific details and pictures showing exactly what that will look like in the portion--
Okay, yeah, because you got like a three-foot fence outside in front of the church and the--
It's basically--
And it was a six-foot there before. There was a six-foot fence before, right? Or something like that, high. Is there something higher than three foot over there?
That's your rank.
Well, okay, let's skip a second.
Yeah, we're happy to have our site engineer explain--
No. Historic, historic is okay with that picture.
100%, and that, that's very, there are specific pictures that are part of our HPC approval that show exactly what that condition will look like.
That's what I was saying. Okay. That's, that's what I need to know. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? That's it? Okay, thank you. Ms. Porter, anything else?
No, I would just rest simply based on the testimony of our architect, and to the extent that the board has any other questions, we're happy to address them. We did review all the comment letters, and we did have an opportunity to submit responses in connection with several of the comments that we received from JCMU Way, as well as the Department of Transportation and Engineering. There was only one comment that was basically, we couldn't state, we could fully comply because it was contingent upon us getting approval from PSCNG to make that change--
Sure.
--which we referenced in our response letter, but otherwise can state for the record that we would fully comply with all remaining comments from all agencies.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise, I'm sorry. It's going to be a while before I get that out of my system. Please come on up to the mic. We have three minutes for you. Anybody from public?
The chair say no public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Motion is, I might do that. Motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. I can take that was your closing statement before--
That was.
--we open it up for public. Okay, thank you. And this is Matt. Hi. Anything you want to add?
Chairman, thank you. The applicant put on the record that they are going to comply with the conditions in the staff memos, as well as the historic conditions put on by the HPC. We think that this amendment is rather straightforward. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-216 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay. Vice Chairman, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Chairman Laxton.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, Eric Gray.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so we carried Mr. Higgins. I'm trying to swipe on a paper agenda. Oh my God. Mr. Harrington, can we get you done in 22 minutes?
Less.
Okay.
Even if we let Mr. McCann open his mouth?
I just want to say, thank you very much for being here at all and cutting into the agenda. We understand you can't hear us tonight, and we're taking off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let's just announce that. That's P2, oh, I'm sorry, P2023-0036. It's item 20. I don't want to read that entire thing into the record, but that's carried to a date certain, January 23rd.
Uh, no, but you have the site plans on there, too, or?
No.
I can just plug--
Redevelopment, yes. Counsel, I just got word that it's getting nasty out there. If we could, yeah, let's try and get this done as quick as possible. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because where'd our HDMI cord go?
Oh, you could plug this into the USB.
Yeah, but it all goes to the HDMI.
Now, they've got every, you've got everything but HDMI. Display port. Where is it? Where is this thing? Oh, we're good?
Yeah, it was under your--
Should it be up on the screen?
Bridgette, are you ready? 18. I didn't call it yet, I don't think. Okay, you ready? Okay, I'd like to call case P23-104 as an administrative amendment for 35 to 43 Cottage Street. Counsel?
Okay, thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connefoley. On behalf of the applicant, we did provide public notices for this meeting, specifically for tonight, for the in-person meetings, so I'd ask that those be reviewed and marked into evidence.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. I'm receipt of the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing was provided before the meeting here this evening. I've had the opportunity to review it. I'm now in receipt of the original hard copy green cards. It is 35 Cottage Street LLC. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. Do I have to restate that?
No, I got it. Thank you.
A1 in evidence.
Okay, thank you. So this board, I'm sure is familiar with this project and the Homestead Place Extension. We are seeking tonight administrative amendments to what is the fourth phase of the Homestead Place projects. We were listed, as you know, a number of times on the agenda, and we thank the board for indulging us because we had to make some minor changes with regard to the synagogue and the rabbi's comments and some building code changes in the meantime. So what you'll see tonight, they are pretty straightforward. We have facade changes to the project. We do not have EFIS. The initial application did have an EFIS material that has been removed. There is a change in the unit mix, but the unit count is the same. So that is one of the interior changes. So there are some interior changes that were listed on the summary we provided the board, but we're largely here for the facade changes at the upper and lower levels. And with that said, I have Paul Freitas, who's our architect. He's going to walk you through that. For the record, Mr. Collins is here from Dresner Robin, our civil engineer, and even you need to hear from them. We have received the comment letters from the Jersey City Engineering Department, and we, we have no problem, you know, complying with them or addressing them, and as well as the staff report. And just for the record, too, this, because I talked to Mr. De Silva beforehand, this, this phase is the one that will be between Van Rypen, the Van Rypen Project and Cottage. So it's, it's the last part of the, the extension that, that will be privately done. So it's really going to open us up to start the discussions with the community and, and planning as to how to, how to really design this going forward. So we're excited about that. And with that said, Mr. Freitas?
All right, thank you, counsel.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Paul Freitas, P-A-U-L-F-R-E-I-T-A-S. T, T is Thomas.
Mr. Freitas, good evening. Good to see you in person. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay, thank you. As Mr. Harrington had mentioned, the bulk of the changes here really revolve around code, addressing some code issues with respect to apartment sizes, some changes according to the, what the synagogue had wanted, as well as coordination with mechanical engineer, getting all the systems and rooms in place to kind of make it all work. What, there, so I'm just going to briefly go over the salient ones. If you have any questions related to other smaller pieces of the letter we sent out on December 22nd, I'm happy to do that. Primarily, one of the larger changes was the change in the unit counts with respect to the numbers of studios.
Unit mix.
Unit mix, I'm sorry. Not unit counts, unit mix. I stand corrected. In total, there are 336 studios, 168 studio alcoves, and 48 one-bedrooms compared to what was previously suggested, which was 216 studios, 264 studio alcoves, and 72 one-bedrooms. The gross floor area is all the same. It just, it's been kind of massaged and kind of, we've kind of moved it around in certain places. So as part of the changes, there were additional terraces added and kind of reconfigured to kind of accommodate the client and the synagogue's needs. So I can, I can walk you through the floor plan, but I mean, most of it, for example, on the first floor, really has, a lot of it has to do with accommodating egress based on the code, adding bike rooms, providing water meter room, adding additional doors for ingress and egress throughout the space. That's basically the first floor. Second floor, again, were changes that were based on kind of synagogue needs with respect to enlarging a kitchen area, adding some doors, and kind of reorganizing some egress, especially one of the stair, stairs that was meant for the synagogue and its uses in itself, as well as an additional door. Okay. Third floor, we added a terrace which has acoustical louvers on it that also houses mechanical units. It's specific to the synagogue. It supports all the functions of the synagogue, and so we situated it proximate to their uses. And then the terraces as well, also kind of changed. The fourth floor through 27, our unit sizes had to change based on code requirements, so that's why the unit change, unit types kind of changed and the unit counts, not the, not the counts, the mix. The unit mix changed based on that. So of course, the plan changed, and so we had to kind of modify our elevations to reflect those changes to the units because we have to change windows and, and all the other items that are associated with it. So for example, this north elevation, again, it basically addresses the changes to the units, you know, and their, their demise walls. So the look of the building remains pretty much the same. It's just the organization of the windows and the structural kind of mullions that are associated with the facade have changed a bit. On this elevation, we, we also changed, we changed it to glass instead of having these kind of vertical metal mullions. So there's a change in, in some of the facade in this section over here. So it's all glass with glass spandrel beams versus metal panels, ACM panels on the original. And then, lastly, this area over here originally was called out to be EFIS, and we've suggested that it gets changed over to a Portland stucco. And that's pretty much the extent of the changes.
The change on the ground floor, the elevations?
Yeah. Well, again, yeah, same, same kind of, it's, it's all similar. No EFIS. It's all stucco now. So the whole, whole lower section over here for the synagogue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Freitas. Any questions? Anybody?
No.
Thanks for helping with our, this board's war on EFIS. I appreciate that.
You're trying.
All right.
My insurance company likes it, too.
Counsel, anything else?
No, that's all. As I said, Mr. Collins is here, if the board has any questions for the civil engineer, but there weren't really any civil changes here.
Okay. I don't think so. Anybody? Okay, thank you. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? If so, step up to the mic.
Mr. Chair, I see no public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. This is, I'm sorry, you're sitting there. Matt, go ahead. I apologize.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so in your data portal provided is my staff report. This is a relatively straightforward amendment to an existing application. The density function, bulk, mix of uses, and the overall impact to the public realm are remaining the same from the previous approval. The most substantial change was the addition of that third-floor mechanical terrace to accommodate the HVAC system for the synagogue. Staff expressed some concerns about potential noise impacts on neighboring properties. The applicant produced an acoustic analysis-- The applicant produced an acoustic analysis and added acoustically rated louvers to mitigate that noise and bring the terrace in compliance with our noise ordinance. Um, and with that concern, ameliorated, um, staff recommends approval with all conditions from the memo.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P23-104 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
By unanimous consent, this passes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counsel.
He stayed the whole- Good evening, Chairman. I understand that, and, uh, we will be willing to, uh, carry this, uh, with preservation of notice. Of course, I would ask that this maybe be bumped up a little bit on the-
You can do that.
As, uh, two times in a row now, we were next to go, so. So, uh, with that said, I wish, uh, everybody a wonderful evening. Glad to be back and, uh, safe getting home.
Okay, so, thank you. So, we're gonna carry case P23-099, uh, for 17 to 23 Perrine Avenue, to a date certain 123. And Counsel, I apologize, a couple of us were busy down in Atlantic City catching COVID, so, uh, oh, yeah. Yeah, that happened. Okay, so that, uh, brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. I will entertain, uh, memorialization of resolutions, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. I have seven today. First one is Resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number repeat 2023-006. Applicant is 135 Monte LLC. Address 135 Monachello Av- Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 16701, Lot 29. Decided on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, and memorialized on January 9th, 2024. This is an application for a minor site plan approval with C variances. Number two is Resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number, uh, Z2023-0046. Applicant is Ocean Woodland LLC. Address 278 Grand Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 14105, Lot 9. Decided on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. Memorialized on January 9th, 2024. Application for site plan amendment approval with C variances. Number three is Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City. Applicant 27-29 Fayette LLC for preliminary and final major site plan with variances at 27-29 Fayette Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 9202, lots four and five, numbered P22-210. Hearing date September 19th, 2023, October 10th, 2023, and November 14th, 2023. Resolution number four, the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of 36 McAdoo Avenue, also known as 1 through 5 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Application number P2023-0059. Decided, uh, November 28th, 2023, memorialized January 9th, 2024. Application for extension of preliminary and final major site plan and deviation approval. Number five is Resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board for review and discussion of amendments to the Powerhouse Arts District redevelopment plan regarding the addition of educational uses as a permitted use. Case number P2023-0096. Number six is Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City. Applicant Sussex Street Associates LLC for preliminary major site plan approval with variances 177 Grand Street and 193-195 Grand Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 14205, lots 10 dot 01, 12, and 13. Case number P23-0002. Final resolution number seven, Resolution of the Division of Planning of the City of Jersey City. Applicant Sunaco LLC for minor site plan approval and bulk variance relief 457 Grand Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, uh, 07302, Block 15701, Lot 3. Case number P22-233.
Second.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
Okay, uh, executive session?
No. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All right, guys, thank you. Get home safe to your families, all right?
Thank you, sir.
And good to see you all in person. Bridget, thank you so much.
This is nice.
It's good seeing everyone.
Right, yeah, it's great.
I mean, I like remote, and there's, there's a place for it, a big place for it.
There's pluses and minuses, but we can, I think we can move things a little quicker.
As long as there's no hybrid.
No. No, we're not doing that. No point in that.
I think this is, this is faster than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, the room is dynamite. I can hear it.
Yeah, I like it, right? I'm happy about the area, but, uh- I think the only thing that we gotta deal with hiccup wise is these guys fighting with these-